Good evening everyone and welcome to our board meeting of April 9th. Please stand and Mr. Kement will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start our meeting tonight, I would like to take a moment of silence for Tom Lukastanski, he was one of our curriculum directors a while back and he just passed away over the weekend and he was a dear friend of all of us, so take a moment of silence please. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of March 28th. Motion please.
I'll make a motion. Yeah, we have three committees. Francis Flannigan for board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have comments to Board of Education members, superintendent and central administration, and we will start with Greg again tonight.
Nothing but this slide.
Okay. What movie? The green?
Hopefully everybody had a good Easter.
Yes, we did. We're by fast, isn't it?
Yes.
Kevin? I mean Matt, I do that every time, Matt, I'm sorry.
Welcome, it's nice to see a full house.
Joe.
Good to see everybody tonight.
Mr. Kement?
Lansing, the legislature's back in session, it looks like they're gonna come up with the budget by the end of April, which is very good for districts to try to balance the budget, not going into the summer not knowing what kind of money we're gonna have in the fall. And it appears that Lansing has more money than they anticipated even as far as last June, so it looks like a lot of the things that the governor was talking about are gonna come true.
Yay. A lot of breath though, right?
Yeah, let's wait till it's done, but right now it looks good. That's all I have.
Anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Mark?
Nothing at this time.
Diane?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Pete?
Mr. Denning, hello.
Hello. Thank you for calling.
Okay, Mr. Steenland?
This is our home stretch before graduation, and I'm sure the teachers know how many days we have left before school's out, I'm sure the principal will do too, but this is our home stretch, so we'll make it.
The band banquet is on Thursday also.
And the band banquet is Thursday at the Vintage House, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Next we have our accolades for years of service. Ms. Roseville Board of Education would like to take this opportunity to express its appreciation for those members who have served our district over the years. We can't thank all our teachers, our custodians, our bus drivers, our support help, our secretaries, or anybody, everybody, cooks, I mean we just couldn't do it without you, we have such a great group of people here, and now we would like to recognize them for their times with us. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hedmark.
Okay. In the board agenda, it is listed by their number of years, how they've been honored, but tonight, in order to move smoothly, we're gonna have them come up by buildings, and if we can start first with Roseville High School, if Mr. Adams will come up from Roseville High School, and if the Roseville High School staff can come across the front. Okay? Um, Mr. Adams?
Yeah, sure.
First, I believe we have ten years, Ms. Deb Roberts, indispensable counseling clerk and go-to person in our building, I can't say enough, she's a wonderful person and a wonderful employee, thank you, yeah, for your tenure.
Next we have Jessie Hansen, fifteen years.
Jessie Hansen, fifteen years, part of our special education department. Jessie, thank you for all you do, wonderful leader within the department, thank you. Next, Roseanne Martz. I believe Roseanne, twenty years. If there is anybody that is indispensable, Roseanne is, she does all the scheduling in the building, she doubles as the athletic director's secretary, does a marvelous job, and we don't know what we'd do without you, Roseanne, thank you.
I have my husband Don here with me, tremendous support through everything, and my daughter Stephanie, who's a kindergarten teacher at Huron Park, and my little grandson Maxwell. Thank you.
Next, Amy Sperry, twenty-five years. Amy's a mathematics teacher and physical education as well, indispensable too. Thank you, Amy, for your years of service, we appreciate it.
I have my sidekick.
Who's your sidekick?
Isabelle, my daughter.
I have Isabelle.
Who's everywhere.
She is, yeah, looks just like you.
Mr. Brian King, thirty years. Mr. King is in our science department, a chemistry teacher, one of the leaders in the school and in the department, thank you, Brian.
No, my kids aren't here, they'd love to be here, but they're in college right now, so.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Betten of Roseville Middle, if you'd come up, and the Roseville Middle staff could come up and stand over at the side there on the podium.
I'd like to start with Mr. Ian Jealous, Ian is a French teacher in the building with fifteen years of service and is one of the co-sponsors of, I believe they call it, our S- French Club, the Spanish and French Club, the S- French Club, I may have it wrong, it may be Frannish, Frannish, the Frannish Club.
You guys are really...
Next, also with fifteen years of service, Ms. Kristy Norris. Kristy is a member of our special education staff, a welcome staff addition this year from our sister school at Eastland Middle School. And with twenty-five years of service, our Spanish teacher, Ms. Elaine Smith, the other co-sponsor of our Frannish Club.
Elaine, I know you have... Yes, I brought my husband Bernie, that a lot of you know, and my two boys Connor and Carson, and my daughter couldn't be here tonight, and since I have the mic, I wanna say a few more words because I've never come to this, because I've always been busy with my kids, so I started twenty-five years ago with Mr. Hedmark and Mr. Bliskowski, and I worked for Mr. Schumer and Mr. Betten, and I just, I love working in Roseville, and thank you board, because in 2000, when my daughter was born, I went to Mr. Hedmark in tears, and I said, "I love being a teacher, and I'm so happy, I'm finally a mom, what am I gonna do, I don't wanna quit my job," and he helped me and Amy Borges come up with this partial schedule that not many people have done, and for fourteen years, I got to be a mom and a teacher, so, thank you board.
If we could get the Steenland staff up here to Mr. Felker's right.
I'm gonna start with Ms. Beth Alfonsi. Ms. Alfonsi has ten years in this district, I've worked with her not only at Steenland, but also at Dort Elementary School, where she used to teach fifth and sixth grade, and now she is our science enrichment teacher, as well as the lead of our science Olympiad team, so thank you very much, and a wonderful ten years, thank you.
You're in multiple buildings.
I know. Here she is. Oh, okay, oh, now they're hiding back out the door again, oh, there they are. I have my son Anthony, my daughter Alexis, and my other son is checking out the fish with my husband.
Second, I have Ms. Jacqueline Felker with twenty years. Mrs. Felker started her career in the district actually as a music teacher, and then moved to the classroom about eight years ago, and she currently teaches third grade at the district, and participates in a bunch of committees, both in the district and in the building, so thank you very much, Mrs. Felker. I know her a little bit.
She exists all the time.
I know, right? Thank you.
Best Teacher of the Year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Felker. Alex is at college, and Eden is at Crappy, so. Thank you.
With twenty-five years, Ms. Kelly Berger. Mrs. Berger was our teacher in charge when I started at Steenland Elementary, and just a wonderful support person over there, helped me transition to the building, was just wonderful, and then now she teaches our fourth and fifth grade multi-age classroom, which is a challenge in itself, so it's a very different twist on a traditional curriculum, so thank you very much. Did you bring anybody with you tonight?
No, I'm just gonna chat, talk with all these other teachers.
And also with twenty-five years, Mr. Dan O'Sullivan. Mr. O'Sullivan is not only the school social worker for many of the buildings in the district, but he is also a coach for the cross-country team, and is really a mentor to some of our most challenging students, so we thank him very much for all of his dedication, and he's also my go-to guy for resources in the community, so thank you very much, Mr. O'Sullivan. Did you bring anybody with you tonight?
No, I have absolutely nobody here. For all you...
I'm here, sorry. My turn to give back.
We have one more twenty-year award for Steenland Elementary, and that would be a gentleman that started as a kindergarten teacher, and now principal, Steenland Elementary, Mr. Felker.
Did you bring anybody with you?
I brought my wife, how much?
I'm gonna accept on behalf of Karen Picoli, she's not able to make it tonight, and what did I win? Oh, very beautiful, thank you very much, and I brought with me my lovely wife, we're in a bed, kidding. Thank you.
Mr. Stapp from Dort Elementary, and the Dort staff...
Are you gonna take all this home?
Well, then you can accept on behalf of all of them.
Okay. I don't believe so. Good evening, my name is Donovan Steck, I'm principal at Dort Elementary School, and while we do have few teachers who cross over from building to building, who are being represented here tonight, they are spending primarily more of their time in other buildings, so they'll be represented by them. We do have one teacher celebrating a milestone year, that's Ms. Sakala, she's celebrating twenty-five years tonight, and she's a wonderful teacher, students' parents love her, unfortunately she wasn't supposed to tonight, couldn't be here, so I will accept on her behalf. If we have the Eastland staff, if they could come on up, see Mr. Herbertson, Ms. Baker, Ms. Klaus, Mr. O'Sullivan yet again, you already got your award, sit down. Sure, thank you, Mr. Schumer, you've worked with them all too. These folks really deserve some kind words, and I was fortunate enough to be their principal for many years. First up, we have Ms. Baker, she is absolute magic with the children, when you ask who their favorite teacher is, you'll probably get her name nine times out of ten, she's just a real positive force in the building, I really appreciate having, appreciated having her there, and I'm sure Dr. McKiss does too, congratulations.
The Vandams adopted me for the night, so, my family...
Next up, we have Betty Klaus, Betty has served in the office for many, many years, she just has a really even keel, calm way about her, very competent, a great face, she'll do anything for you, very dedicated, and she's a great face to represent the Roseville Community Schools in the office, congratulations, Betty.
Thank you to everybody, fifteen years today, or this year, thank you.
Up next, this short gentleman on my right, I know he's twenty-five years, and Joe Herbertson, absolutely does a phenomenal job with the kids, he cares deeply about his students when it comes to classroom management, he doesn't need a megaphone, he booms, and I know his social studies, are you still doing the courage class? Does a great job with that, has speakers in, and really does a nice job telling the kids about life as well as his curriculum, congratulations.
I have nobody here, but I'd just like to thank Mr. Kement, the board, all the administrators that I've had the pleasure of working with, and all the teachers I've had a pleasure of working with, and truly appreciative of the family atmosphere here at Roseville Schools, and it's been a great twenty-five years, thank you.
Close Mr. Adams, but not.
Fountain Elementary, Johnson.
There he is.
And just a pretty, just required, just a...
Okay, we have Nancy Thibodeau, who is one of our lunchroom supervisors, that is just magical in the lunchroom. We've been together a lot longer than ten years, but ten years, you are getting recognized for service tonight, we started off together with your grandkids over at Kaiser, and she was known as Fancy Nancy, who would come in and read to the kids, all dressed up, so she has been a lawyer, a loyal supporter of our schools for many, many years, so ten years in that lunchroom, you are on a straight ticket to heaven, I tell ya. That's all I got to say, but the kids love you, and we love you, so thank you.
My daughter Alexis, who is a teacher at Kement, my son-in-law Paul, and my granddaughter Megan, Vandam.
With twenty years, we have Ms. McGuire, who is one of our third grade teachers this year, everybody knows Ms. McGuire in the building, because Ms. McGuire is so loyal and dedicated, she comes to almost every evening event, for not only Fountain, but for the district, and she's always there, always wanting to help, always offering to do something, so Ms. McGuire, thank you for twenty years.
I would just like to thank the board, and the rest of the administration, and Mr. Johnson as well, for my occupation as a public school teacher here in Roseville, I would like to let everyone know I do live in Roseville, so that is one of the reasons why I am able to come to so many night events, but I had a chance to reacquaint myself over the years that I've worked here with former teachers, and many school board members, and other workers here in the district that I've gotten to know over the years, so I'm thankful for those relationships, and I'm happy to see all my Huron Park friends that I met when I first started twenty years ago, and I would like to thank Mrs. Kessick in front of everyone, she was my mentor when I started here at Roseville Community Schools, and I had the opportunity to tell her last year that I was ever so grateful, because she had called me during the summer, and she welcomed me, and I was looking forward to meeting with her in the fall, and she has been a great colleague and a great friend over the years, so thank you.
And finally, from Fountain, we have Kristen Kessick, or Mrs. Lipinski, depending on how long you've known her, she causes me grief every year, because I can only fit so many students in her room, when all the parents want her, just a dynamo teacher, and the students that come from her rooms are just so ready to hit third grade, that I've never really seen it, like I've seen it with you, and you just really work, she's there before the sun comes up, and then leaves to go be with her family, as every mom does, but there isn't a day that you will not find her there at 7:00 AM, and working away, and she's just a very, very dedicated employee, and for twenty-five years, we thank you.
I just wanted to thank the board and administration for allowing me to do what I love, and I've worked with many of the people in here, and it's been an honor to work with everybody, and I don't have my family here tonight, because my oldest two girls are in college, and my husband is with my youngest daughter at travel softball practice, so, that's why nobody's here, so thank you again.
Mr. Schultz, Huron Park. Huron Park staff, we're here.
All right, we have Ms. Lynn Sharp, ten years, Ms. Sharp's been there as long as I can remember, it seems like, and she's had some very interesting classes, when they leave her, it's really interesting, because you don't, there's such a big change in them, when they go to another, into different classrooms, because she has such great classroom management, and the kids love her so much, that you go in there and you can hear a pin drop, but when they're doing their reading mastery, and she wants them to yell at the answer, the whole class does, I mean, they actually scared me a couple times, you know, I'm doing observation, and they're yelling answers, like, boom, oh, they're not, they're awake, okay, great, so she's a wonderful addition, and she does one of the best things in the world for me, she's my representative for the scholarship committee meetings, which I just love, so I'm glad she's here, and thank you very much for all you do.
I have my sister Stacy in the back there.
Next, we have Ms. Monastero, Kathy Monastero, twenty years, Kathy is at Dort also, like he said, everything technology in Huron Park, and I believe at Dort, is because of Kathy, she can fix every piece of equipment we have in our building, she knows them, she knows what to do, we have two labs, and the other day, to get them ready, she had to replace twenty hard drives in one lab, nineteen of something else in another lab, I mean, we literally bought her a big toolbox, you know, just put yanking this thing down a hallway, but she's not only just a tech person, she's also does everything you need her to do for any other reasons, lunches, helping the kids with, you know, with after-school program, answering phones, anything we need, Kathy is definitely Huron Park through and through, and we just love her, having her there, and she's a part of our lunch bunch, and she's a wonderful addition to our building.
Kathy, you speak very good Italian, too, I wanna tell you.
I do, I do that.
Ah, the next one, most people may not know this guy, he's been around a little while, thirty years, if you don't know Mr. Williams, he's not the warm and fuzzy kind, so I gotta tell you a story. You know, you come to a building with all women, you kinda gotta change a little bit, so they do this thing at Christmas time with the elf on the shelf, so they give him this box, and say, "Here, you got an elf on the shelf," he goes, "What's an elf on the shelf? What am I supposed to do with this?" So they tell him, you know, you take the book out, you read the story, you give it candy cane, put the elf on the shelf, and at the end of the day, you put it back in the box, and then we'll, you know, take care of it, don't let anybody touch it, or it loses its magic, so halfway through the day, he comes out, "What am I supposed to do, what am I supposed to do?" Kid touches it, they wanna beat him up. He touched the elf, so he goes down to the preschool, he says he preschool, and he asks the teacher, the teacher says, "Oh, we can fix that, you take cinnamon, and you sprinkle it on the elf, and it comes back to life." So here's Mr. Williams in his classroom, "All right, you don't have to beat up David, all right, we're gonna save the elf, here, sprinkle cinnamon on the elf, he's gonna come back to life." So, that's how much he's changed, and how much he's, you know, loves being at Huron Park, and we really enjoy having him.
Well, if you know me, you know I don't like to talk very much, so, I wanna thank the Board of Education, the six administrators that I've had in the buildings that I've worked at, honor of coming in at the same year as Ms. Janay, and superintendent at the time, Mr. Kement, it's been a long ride, I counted it up the other day, I've had fifteen different staff members, kids, in my classrooms over the years, which is kinda neat, and most of them like me, so, but, yeah, I just wanna thank everybody for the thirty years, and my family, like Mr. King, are, all three boys and girls are in college, so they're not here, and my wife, who works in the district as well, is picking my daughter up from the train station, coming back from Western Michigan, so, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Ms. Williams, or, excuse me, Mr. Schumer, and then...
Ms. Ayub, I was looking for you. Hi, I'm Paul Schumer, I'm the principal of Kement Elementary, I know a lot of you, been fortunate enough to work with some great staffs, and Kement is definitely one of them, they got a great staff there. First up, we have Ms. Ayub, Ms. Ayub is celebrating ten years tonight, fifteen years, I'm sorry, that's right, Ms. Samoski's not here, I do wanna say a couple words about Ms. Samoski real quick, if I could though, she works in the office, she's, was a lunchroom supervisor, and she fills in for my secretary, and she is absolutely, just so positive, she's got kids in the district, they're super high caliber, as she is, she's just a classy lady, very positive, and when Ms. Serma's not there, she's a great representative to have in the building, I'm grateful for her. So, next up, we have Ms. Ayub, when I got there, Dr. Weiman told me this lady is gold, and of course, he was right, as he was about a lot of things, she will do anything for you, she absolutely has the biggest heart I've ever seen, she is a lunchroom supervisor, she helps out in the after-school program, just whatever you want her to do, helps out in the classrooms, and now she's doing a long-term sub-assignment, so, just very, very loyal to the district, and she really shares herself with the kids, and they really love her, so we do too, thank you very much. Fifteen years.
Thank you so much, there's no word I can say afterwards, he said for me, "Mr. Schumer, thank you for every principle I work with him, thank you for all the board, for the district, for Hedmark, Mr. Kement, Mr. Schumer, Mr. Johnson..." Because I have not teachers, I have sisters, like family, a friend, everything I can ask about it for them. This is why I'm work, like, I work with family, not district or any school or any, like the kids, all students, like my kids, all the teacher or the principal, everyone. He need help, I can help. How much God give it to me, I can give it to them. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Melissa Rogers. She's celebrating 15 years as well. Melissa's a kindergarten teacher at Coment, she's also my teacher in charge. This lady, we have a joke about it, she radiates positivity. I kinda joke with her that, "Boy, you're not smiling," or something. But she's also an extremely skillful teacher, very, very knowledgeable about the kindergarten curriculum. She really, the unique thing about her and the way she teaches is she strives successfully to create and maintain a community of learners. They're like a family in there, they all help each other and it really works for her. Sometimes the students we're getting are coming in less prepared, younger, and she's up to any challenge. So, I really, really appreciate her. Thanks for all you do.
I am here with my youngest son, Timmy, who's got a phone on his face back there. He's taking pictures. My oldest son couldn't be here because he's at catechism and then my sister-in-law, Diane. I just wanna say thank you to everybody for this wonderful opportunity. I've thoroughly enjoyed every moment working here in Roseville with all of these amazing families and teachers and staff. And it's just been wonderful. So, thank you, it's been my honor.
I just wanna say, her classroom made this little blanket for me last year with all the little hand marks on it. All the students that were in her class from kindergarten all the way to high school. So, I wanted to share it with everybody here, it's just an awesome blanket. Thank you again for that stuff over there.
Next up, we have, I believe, 20 years, Alexis Van Damme, the quintessential professional. She actually, the program that we use, Connecting Math Concepts, actually asked her to do their video because she implements with such fidelity. And her class is just incredibly, runs incredibly smooth. She has a very large class and they're a bunch of busy, energetic folks and she just handles it with, you know, an enchalance that amazes me. You know, her transitions are very, very smooth. She handles potential problems almost before they start. And really, if you're looking for a great teacher, her classroom is one I would definitely recommend for you to come and see. That's an open invite, by the way. I know she won't mind. Thanks so much, Alexis.
I have with me my husband, Paul, my daughter, Megan, and my mom, Nancy. My oldest is away at college, so she couldn't be here.
Next up, we have Marsha Vitovich. Don't try to spell her last name, took me a while. She really serves an interesting job. She's a literacy coach and she has forgotten more about reading than I know. She does a phenomenal job, she does pretty much whatever you ask her to. She tests students when they come in. She does reading interventions, works with the kids on a great program we've got on the computer and really does whatever we ask her. She was really instrumental in the success of Coment with the SIG grant and, you know, with some of those people having to be cut because of the grant ending, I'm relying more and more heavily on her, so I really do appreciate her. Did a great job with Reading Month this month, too. Congrats.
Thank you for all of this. I brought with me my husband and my three children. I have Kendall, Camden, he's on his phone too, and my loud one, Cassidy, in the back. So, thank you.
I'd like you to help me celebrate Erin O'Keefe, who has been in our district for 10 years. Now, Erin is a kindergarten teacher and what she is able to do with kindergarteners is an absolute amazement to me every time I come into her classroom. She has kindergartners working at various centers. There could be five different centers that these babies are rotating through, focused, attentive, getting the job done, while she's doing reading right up front. It's an absolute amazement on what she is able to accomplish. And she's also done some research, so she's not just looking at this year, but she's also looking into the future. What can we do with the kindergarten program to make it even better to reach, as we've pointed out, students who maybe are coming in a little less prepared? So, let's celebrate 10 years, Erin O'Keefe. Now, Amy and I started 20 years ago together in the district and she's gone through a number of changes. She started out as a teacher, she's taught a number of different grades, she's now my early literacy specialist and my right-hand person, teacher in charge. So, she is the person that I really count on if I have to be away for any reason, that she steps in. She also has a unique ability to make connections with not just the early literacy students, but all the students at Patton Elementary. 20 years, Amy Ye. And all the people that she brought.
I have a whole crew with me. I have my two daughters, Madeline and Claire. My daughter Claire just turned 16 on Saturday, so it's been a big week for us. And my nephew, Sam, and my mom, Nancy, who I would not be here without. So, I appreciate all of her support. I never would've been able to raise these children and work full-time as a single mom without her help. And thank you to the board and all my friends here from Hero on Park. So, thank you.
We have one more recipient of a 20-year award and that would be Principal Jeannie Williams. And we slipped a Garmin in the watch box for you there.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, board. I mean that, thank you very much, a Garmin. I'm thrilled, absolutely thrilled. It is an absolute pleasure, 20 years, gone through a lot of different changes. I count the thousands of students that went through my 6th grade classroom, my 4th grade classroom, and that now are funneling through Patton Elementary. And I'll tell you what, it's been one heck of a great journey here in Roseville. So, thank you and thank you, board.
Now, we are at the administration building and we have three recipients there. I could have Tammy Hertz, come on up. I'll do Tammy and then, okay. We have Tammy Hertz is our secretary for the special ed department. And there's, like Mr. Johnson said, there's a special place in heaven for people that take care of those kinds of things. And she is very attentive to the parents, very attentive to the new parents moving into the district that are very concerned and worried for the kind of services that their kids are gonna get and need. And I will tell you that she puts their worries to rest, takes excellent care of the students that we have, the new students coming in, answers questions. You will seldom hear any disgruntled special ed parent moving into the district after working with Ms. Hertz in the special ed office. She does a great job and we really appreciate it. And that's 20 years. Congratulations.
I have my husband, Rex, with me tonight, so.
Now, we'll have to do a little tag-team trade-off here. I think we'll have, Mr. Coment will do Ms. Janay.
I'm a little upset. Over 30 years ago, a young parent became involved in the Roseville Community Schools over at Dort. She became a member of the parent club and then she eventually became an officer and the leader of the Dort Parent Club. She decided that she wanted to give back to the schools and ran for the Board of Education. And 30 years ago, Teresa was elected onto the Board of Education. That's history and it's stayed that way. She is still active. And here's other accomplishments that she's achieved. The intermediate school district, the ISD came into existence in the late 40s. The only woman ever elected and the only woman presently still ever on the ISD Board of Education is Teresa Janay. I've been very, very lucky to work with great board members and I still do now. Remember, my contract's coming up, so that's a fluke. Teresa has led point since the passing of Mr. Steele. And I think everybody that has dealt with her has been extremely appreciative of her as board president. And Teresa, I love you.
Can't believe it's 30, I started when I was 10. But I couldn't do it without everybody here. I mean, these are my, this is my family here and I have my family here that I could never have done it without. I mean, every time I'd run for the school, I said, "I'm gonna try it one more time." Because the first time I ran, I'm only doing it for four years. So, here I am, 30. So, every time I would run, I would say, "I'm gonna do it again, you guys are gonna be supportive." And thanks for my husband, who's back there, Joe, who took care of that cute little guy behind the camera back there, he runs through Roseville schools, did very well. And my sister Diane and my sister Judy, who's gonna be 80 on Friday, I'm so excited she's here. It was very nice to have my family's support all these years. All our staff here is phenomenal, we've done some wonderful things. We've gone through a few runs and the next bond is coming up in less than 30 days. We hope everybody gets out and votes. And some sad times when we had to lay off a lot of people, those were the tough times. But when you have the time to go to the schools and read to the kids and go to their fun fairs and their special persons day and all their activities and graduation is the best. That's what we're there for. So, to this family, I mean, we're with, I mean, we know everybody, from the time they started, look at, obviously, to the time they have children, their kids graduate, they have babies, and they're coming back to teach. And it's just been a wonderful experience. It's in my blood and I hope to stay a little longer. Thank you very, very much. Now, I think it's my turn. This little guy here, my best, one of my best buds, too. I have a lot of best buds, but my first, I was a PTO mom, 6th grade, gonna run for school board, what do I know? And my first vote as a board member was to pick a new superintendent. And I thought, "I don't know, do that." But we did okay, didn't we, Mr. Coment?
I'll vote for that.
Oh, yeah. So, we've been through a lot of stuff. His illness was a little scary for some of us. And one story I have to tell you about, we don't always get along, all the board here, we all have our own opinions. But when it comes time to come to this board and board members pass, we become unified. You might not feel like we're unified to a point, but we are. But this guy, sometimes we finish as our sentences, we're so connected. But this one time, I think it was because he wouldn't go to the doctor. And I was home and I got mad and I was down and I slammed my landing door so hard that the fixture on the wall came down and crashed. I never told you that story, did I? He went to the doctor the next day. It was pretty funny, but I mean, you're just, he's part of the family, he's just part of us. So, Mr. Coment, thank you for 30 years of, as a superintendent, 20 years as an educator. And he did so many things I should've known by now, but I'm gonna let him tell it. So, thank you for all you do for us, John. We couldn't do it without you.
I wanna start by, and a lot of you know her already, but my wife is here tonight. Julie, wave. When you're an administrator or involved in schools, there's a lot of things that you transfer or give to your spouse to take care of. And I have six kids and much of the time that I was involved in the schools was a loss to me because someone else had to do things with my kids and it was my wife. And she did a very good job and, thank you, honey. I look around the room and as the people came up and as I looked at the list of administrators and teachers and staff members that had been hired, I think back and I'm trying to think back, what was your maiden name now that you're married and you have, you know, X-number of kids? And I often said, and I'm saying it again, the best thing that I've ever done in my life besides marrying my wife is come into Roseville. And thank you. Thank you, Board of Education.
I would be remiss if I didn't talk about my two little grandbabies, the son, my son here with his wife, Leslie, gave me, finally, two little boys, six and two. And like John was saying, we, a lot of nights, we have to give up our family to come to things here, especially with the ISD. But you make it up in other ways and that's just the joy of my life. So, I wanna thank them for that little, cute little guy. So, thank you, everybody, so much.
We had to pick out a 50-year award for Mr. Coment and the catalog, you know, with the watches for 20 and the pins for 10. Tammy and I were going through the catalog, we had to pick out something for 50 years. And I kinda thought this was appropriate because as much as we might tease Mr. Coment about, you know, "Well, we're gonna do some technology, we have a PowerPoint, why don't you get up there and run that PowerPoint?" I don't think you're gonna find anyone that's been in education 50 years that might've used this technology. 50 years later, smartphone, email, and all of that, all those bells and whistles. So, don't let them fool you when we joke and we tease them about technology. He's doing it and it is amazing. 50 years in education.
It's engraved and says you're a dino.
Congratulations and thank you, Mr. Coment. I would just like to add that, having worked for Mr. Coment all these years, you know, I was a child, I grew up in the 70s and so the closest thing I could compare it to would be like in the Star Wars saga. I have always felt as though it was like working with Obi-Wan Kenobi. You'd have a question or you'd have a thought or Mr. Coment would have a position and you could be so frustrated, you'd be like, "Ah, why won't he budge? Why won't he budge?" And then all of a sudden, you get this glimmer. He's had so many experiences, he knows so much that you can't possibly comprehend, that you'd be all upset about something that happened and he'd be like, "Let me tell you a story." And he'd tell you a story that would make you go, "Oh, wow. Yeah, I guess what I'm worried about is really nothing compared to that." His breadth of experience has been absolutely amazing and we appreciate it every day, Mr. Coment. Thank you very much. Like to thank everyone that came tonight for the service awards. Really appreciate it. And Ms. Janay, you gonna take it up from there?
Sure, thank you, Pete. We have our first public hearing, does anyone from the public wish to be heard at this time? There'll be another public hearing at the end of the meeting. Thank you. We're gonna do comments to Board of Education members, 'cause I think we're gonna let some of the staff go. So, before we do the end of the, I know some of the staff's gotta go on the first day back to school and parents and the kids are here. Why don't we do a go-around again and then we'll start with Mr. McCartney this time.
Well, thank you all for your dedication and service. Thank you all. Thank a couple of you personally, you know who you are, for being responsible for my children's education, Alexis, Mr. Felker, Ms. Barry. I'm probably-
Alexis, Mr. Felker, Ms. Barry. I'm probably missing some, half the room, but you're what it's all about, and this is definitely a family environment. And for so many of you to have 10 years, 20 years, 20 years, it's crazy. But thank you very much for all you do.
Mr. Joe?
Very nice evening. Congratulations to everybody. Congratulations, Teresa, John.
Thank you.
Did he go again, another 30 years, another 50 years?
You're done.
I hope I live this long.[1532.51][1532.51](LAUGHTER) And to John's wife, I feel for you. God bless you.
Okay, Kevin?
Just congratulations to everybody. You make our job a whole lot easier here, what you guys have done, and taken, and the good times, the bad times, and you just make it so much easier for us, and thank you, and congratulations.
I'd like to say congratulations to everybody also. I didn't feel that well tonight, but I'm glad I'm here. I've enjoyed every minute of it, and I know that, you know, we are family, and I'm so glad that I ended up in Roseville, and I love Roseville, so we're a team.
You have to. Alfredo?
Tito, to everything, and congratulations to everyone.
Mr. Scott?
Congratulations to every one of you, some of I've known over the years. It's been a pleasure, and I hope many more, some of you are still young enough to do the 50 here, too. So, Julie, should be a safe hood for you.[1600.87][1600.87](LAUGHTER)
There is.
So, thank you.
Mr. Headmark, you have anything else you want to add?
Once again, thank you, everybody, for a great turnout for the awards, for the service awards. Really appreciate it, and all of your hard work makes our jobs possible and better.
Mr. Dinning?
Congratulations, and thank you. And I appreciate the fact that all of you have endured the ups and downs of education and the pitfalls, and hung in there. Thank you.
You know, I've been here 30, but I think you were here before I was here. Why didn't you, Mr. Dinning? A long time before I was here.[1636.15][1636.15](LAUGHTER) Yeah, we have to look at that. Okay, we got that in the back row a little ahead here. Mr. Stealin?
Danny, I have stories of Ms. Janay at Dort Elementary School back in the day when I was custoding the net buildings, so... Want me to share a few?
No.
Congratulations, very, very much. It's a pleasure, and again, this is one huge family. It really is, so congratulations.
Mr. Blaskowski?
Just thanks to all the employees. Each one of you are a piece of the puzzle that make this thing whole, and focusing on our kids, that's what it's all about, and dedicating your lives, and sacrificing time to spend with the students of Roseville to make them successful. I really appreciate that.
Ms. Diane?
Congratulations to everybody, and especially Mrs. Janay and Mr. Kement, and Julie, you are a saint.
I just want to remind everybody, our election is May 8. We hope everyone gets out and votes, and I think it's gonna be great. We got a lot of things planned. You'll see all the little stickers all over the place, and we're gonna make Roseville continue to be the great city and school that it is. So, I want to thank you very much for your patience with all of us tonight. Thank you for coming, and we're gonna take a little recess. Oh, I forgot about you. How could I forget about you?[1716.51][1716.51](LAUGHTER)
Just like home.[1720.15][1720.15](LAUGHTER)
Is that how you do it, Julie? You just keep moving it? Okay, try. All right, Mr. Kement?
It's congratulations, of course, but it's also a thank you from all the kids. All the kids that you now have, all these young men and women that you've influenced their lives, all the men and women that you're gonna influence their lives. And as was said, it's all of you that make up a school system that's successful. So, thank you very much. Thank you from the kids.
All set?
All set.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, it'll take a few minutes, so you can leave gracefully if you'd like to leave. You're welcome to stay. It's not a very long meeting, but thank you so much.